Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stenham. Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye. Councilwoman Long is a gracious leader, gracious leader of the public.
Oh, my God, I have been listening for our duty. As long as this is just, if family period all we do, above all, we seek out a holy will, give a desperate following, because of all human desperation.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, in all.
This is a regular meeting of the city councils incorporated in the annual meeting of 2011, which was filed on the state clerk's office and posted on the local board for December 28, 2010, and since it has started, I want to make a few remarks. The plans are permitted to be ordered by the law of New Jersey. Public speaking, I would now open the disportionment of the young doctors of public speaking. Is there any one from the president wishes to address the council on the way to the podium at this time? Please give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Long Merschel, Knight Street, New Jersey.
Aye.
Also, a little bit of business owner, been in business for thirty years. I was here back in January, and I'm in court petition. You may remember about the expensive increase in licensing fee for secondhand units. I want to thank the government for asking that it gives me to a reasonable price. Thank you very much, but there were other matters on petition that I didn't address. As when I was here in January, there were about thirty licenses issued. Now there are forty-one according to the principal license bureau and the tech bureau that I'm in constant contact with. These licenses are being handed out at all licenses, just anybody who's going to go with $150. In fact, there's stores that are applying for licenses, such as 1165, which is a major just okay license. It's ninety-nine sex work. It has a we buy local session standing inside it. 557 North Road Street has a pending license, has not been approved yet, but it's a check action service. 259 North Road Street is applying for license. It's sharing a space in historical land services. They do mail-in money overseas, they have internet points, they have phone points so they can call receipts, and yet they want, they think that somehow that they are able to buy the license. And to me speaks up about the city can issue these licenses. When I spoke to the detective bureau, the detective that does the policing of these stores that go around, pick up the weekly slips of what to purchase, he used the word saturation, that city is saturated with these stores. And his job is open-minded with having to police these stores. I spoke to the legal department about the issue. They told me the same thing, that somebody needed to come from the castle and speak about it. I have copies of the first page of the petition here showing number two and number four, like three, you're handing up.
Can you hand it to the city clerk or should I name it hell on the road?
No, it's not. I couldn't put it out. I know we talked about it in January, but well. Someone need to call back. At the rate that they're going, if they allow this by any type of store, whether they're going to allow a convenience store, a grocery store, the bull by service. When I spoke to the legal department, and the detective bureau, especially the officer that does the policing of the licensed stores, I was told that they both thought that more touring, not licenses issued is what's most probably needed. And imagine number that they both thought was the correct number would be about thirty. Current is forty-one. And they suggested, and I admit as well, not to issue anymore licenses until they, until all the stores have dropped out. Once they got down to number twenty-nine, then there's available license available to be issued, but to keep the licenses that are open up to thirty at most, because that according to the detective bureau would be.
No, if you hear the end, it'd be five minutes. I'm sorry. Well, we're going to take back information, and we will submit to the department or someone else.
If you speak to the legal department, they know where it's.
You're at the bottom now. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any questions for the rest of the council, maybe this time? Anyone else who has any other questions for the rest of the council, maybe this time? Sign off, close that portion of meeting, and I'm going on, all here.
Order number forty-two fifty-four. Authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Sandra Harland and Hannah, 149 Hansley Place.
Order number forty-five three. Sir, the president wishes to address the city council on orders number forty-five three, and this is what it's time. Once again, anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five three, and this is what it's time. Sign off, close that portion of meeting.
Orders number forty-two fifty-four. Authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Shirley Page O'Jure, 451 Wall Street.
Order number forty-five four. Is there anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five four, and this is what it's time? Once again, anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five four, and this is what it's time? Sign off, close that portion of meeting.
Orders number forty-two fifty-five. Authorize the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Susan Jean, 1073 North Avenue.
Order number forty-five five. Is there anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five five, and this is what it's time? Once again, is there anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five five, and this is what it's time? Sign off, close that portion of meeting.
Orders number forty-two fifty-six. Recent, orders number thirty-two twenty-eight, adopted June thirteen, two thousand, which authorizes the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Joseph F. Ervin, 709 Wall Street.
Order number forty-five six. Is there anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five six, and this is what it's time? Once again, is there anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five six, and this is what it's time? Sign off, close that portion of meeting.
Orders number forty-two fifty-seven. Recent, the orders number forty-two twenty-nine, adopted July twenty-six, two thousand eleven, which authorizes the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Francisam along this sixty-one Franklin Street.
Order number forty-five seven. Is there anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five seven, and this is what it's time? Once again, is there anyone present that wishes to address the council on orders number forty-five seven, and this is what it's time? Sign off, close that portion of hearing. Petitions and communications. We can send my colleagues off with this best of radio petitions and communications and reports of city offices. And move on to orders as I'm first reading.
Orders number forty-two fifty-eight. And orders to establish and delete certain classified and more unclassified positions in the city of Elizabeth's table of orders issued.
Order number forty-five. Would you like to? Move on to orders, movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Orders number forty-two fifty-nine. amend chapter ten point fifty-six, article two, section one, via code of the city of Elizabeth, specifically related to the table of organization of the police department, police personnel is provided on attached schedule.
Order number forty-five nine, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president, movement second comments.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Orders number forty-two sixty. amend chapter ten point sixty, article two, section ninety, B of the code of the city of Elizabeth, specifically related to the table of organization of the fire department, fire personnel is provided on attached schedule.
Order number forty-six zero, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president, movement second comments.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Orders number forty-two sixty-one. authorize amendments to chapter ten point twenty-eight point thirty, schedule one, of code of the city of Elizabeth entitled to park and parkway service streets, and chapter ten point twenty-eight point seventy, entitled forty-five to be named a park, specifically classified parking allowed on the roadway between Front Street and Front Street.
Order number forty-six one, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best. Public hearing for consideration before all orders shall take place at the city council meeting to be held in November nine, two thousand eleven, at seven thirty P.M.
Orders number forty-two sixty-two. adopt capital ordinance in the amount one million five hundred thousand dollars, authorizing purchase and installation of the nine-one-one system for upgrading from analog to digital, replacing the existing system.
Order number forty-six two, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Councilwoman Nassan.
President, over this weekend, the last few days, we've been receiving emails, you know, from different people. Can you summarize and stop and explain to me what's happening with this particular contract?
Yes, sir. The, uh, the, well, that's, uh, I don't know, I received an email from a resident who indicated that there were some concerns about this nine-one-one system. You have in front of your documents from business administrator, which was detailed with the nine-one-one system. Basically, the nine-one-one system had licensed for fire medications, commercials, communications, polling. The system had previously been analog to so many other types of technologies, there's a move from analog to digital. So this is a nine-one-one service that the city needs, number one. Number two, we're getting it under state contract prices, so it's the lowest possible price of that. Number three, since the bulk of the landlines in the city continue to be owned by Horizon, it makes sense to have a nine-one-one system run by Horizon, that interfaces with these older landlines than Horizon, but not Horizon contract or, we have a situation where ninety-seven, lack of infrastructure available. So this is not about radios, it's not about communications, it's got nothing but the nine-one-one system. And I would point out that the contract that we had with Horizon was fired on September tenth, and we desperately need to meet the under contract so that if there was a breakdown in the system, that it would be covered. Councilman, thank you very much. Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this system is also very much needed because it's growing the response times, I mean, it's about response times if something happened, whether it be fire, or someone's life, safety, lives, and this nine-one-one is totally different than what the resident was emailing us about, because I read, and he's talking about radio, and this is a system-wide thing where we're connected, in terms of getting response times, it's crucial for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best. Public hearing for consideration before all orders shall take place at the city council meeting to be held Tuesday, December twenty-second, two thousand eleven, at seven thirty P.M. Move now to orders as I'm final passage.
Orders number forty-two fifty-three. authorizes the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Sandra Harland and Hannah, 149 Hansley Place.
Order number forty-five, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Orders number forty-two fifty-four. authorizes the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Shirley Page O'Jure, 451 Wall Street.
Order number forty-five, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Orders number forty-two fifty-five. authorizes the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Susan Jean, 1073 North Avenue.
Order number forty-five, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Orders number forty-two fifty-six. recent, orders number thirty-two twenty-eight, adopted June thirteen, two thousand, which authorizes the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Joseph F. Ervin, 709 Wall Street.
Order number forty-five, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Orders number forty-two fifty-seven. recent, orders number forty-two twenty-nine, adopted July twenty-six, two thousand eleven, which authorizes the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Francisam Alamas, 451 Franklin Street.
Order number forty-five, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best. With the number one, we're good.
Authorizing order contract to Hartford Insurance Company, part of the management of the age and record, whose claim is associated with renewal of the policy of insurance covered by W. Official's bond for city treasurer tax collector, Paul Letzniak, for the period of December one, two thousand eleven, to December one, two thousand twelve, and then an agreement of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Authorizing payment and final approval adjustment for the excess worthless compensation insurance policy with Midwest Employers Casualty Company, covering the period July one, two thousand ten, to July one, two thousand eleven, in total of eight thousand ninety-six dollars. Authorizing order contract to Northeast Oil and Truck Parts LLC, division of Capital Supply in Bayonne, New Jersey, for the purchase of oil and parts and accessories for various departments for the period October four, two thousand eleven, through September twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, at a cost of not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Authorizing order contract to carrier printing corporation deposit in York, for the Friday payment of recycling brochures for the Department of Public Works, for a two-year period and amount to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. Authorizing order contract to Triangle Communications LLC, located in New Jersey, for the purchase of DAD and I-11 computers for two thousand eleven, Ford and Xors, for the Police Department, at a total cost of fifty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars. Authorizing order contract to Route twenty-three Auto Mall, Atlanta, New Jersey, for the purchase of OEM motorboat parts and accessories for light duty vehicles for various departments for the period October from two thousand eleven through October twelve, two thousand thirteen, at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Authorizing order contract to Route twenty-three Auto Mall, Atlanta, New Jersey, for the purchase of oil and parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period October from two thousand eleven through October twelve, two thousand thirteen, at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Order number four, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, order's best.
Authorizing order contract to Route twenty-three Auto Mall, Atlanta, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto motor parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period October twelve, two thousand eleven, through October twelve, two thousand thirteen, at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Authorizing order contract to Jetback Inc., Ward, New Jersey, for the purchase of two mechanical street sweepers for the Department of Public Works, at a total cost of three hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. Authorizing order contract to Pitney Lowski, New Jersey, for the furnishing of post-explanatory maintenance and postage supplies for the period October fifteen, two thousand eleven, through September thirty, two thousand twelve, at a cost not to exceed two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Authorizing order contract to public service and electric and gas companies, South Side, New Jersey, for the installation of thirteen fourteen-deep tall Classic One poles for lighting heels in the River Trail, phase one, in the amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars sixty-seven cents. Authorizing order contract to the Birdsall Service Route, Grandford, New Jersey, to provide environmental consulting and engineering services related to abortion of Sullivan Route and six thirty down Avenue, that was not to exceed eight hundred thousand one hundred dollars. Authorizing property officials to enter into agreement with the nonprofit agencies for community development, law, and funds, year thirty-seven, as listed on schedule A on file in the City Quote Office, for the period July one, two thousand eleven, to June thirty, two thousand twelve, in total of about one million nine hundred one thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars.
Order number four, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Long, Councilwoman Nassan.
Thank you. I can't emphasize enough how important it is for us to get these, uh, the new street sweeper. Uh, you know, in all my block by being in the hour, um, what am I made to the likes of that street sweeper that they have for the city? So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we still get those sweepers in place. Don't know if we can be done by this beginning here, but I would tell people that, I mean, this year, hopefully we have a fiscal year of two thousand and twelve, and we'll be a welcome cycle when we see those speakers, I don't know, speaking morning, a job for us. So hope that we get those in time, especially, thanks, Mr. President.
Absolutely, thank you. Councilman Bestin?
Yeah, Mr. President, the same thing, not only are we getting a few new mechanical sweepers, but we have to follow the speaker with two scooters and whatever area they want to go, so that the people, they don't move their cars, should be able to get their tickets, which that doesn't happen, and I've been stressing for days after day after day. And sometimes after the moon passes by, they try to move the cars, and the dirt remains in the streets, are filthy and dirty. As far as the Elizabeth River Trail, I'm happy to see after five years, the five years from this time, we are really pertaining to this project that was originally to be at EDC office. And, and I'm happy to see that today, we're doing some work alongside, apparently tomorrow, thanks to George, thanks for the email that he sent me, uh, you know, tomorrow at eleven o'clock, we'll be served by. And I think it's a great thing for our city, you know, considering that we are the first capital of New Jersey, to do something like this, it's great, and I'm so happy that it's in my world also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Bestin. Councilman Jacobs, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. President, just a few short weeks ago, we received, um, some information from this company with regards to, uh, the dump trucks that we had that were being refurbished. Three hundred forty-eight thousand dollars for the sweepers is a lot of money, and it probably is necessary that we do have the machines. However, um, there have been some unsaid council that said that new trucks were on the market at that time, and now are looking at purchasing the new sweepers. My question is, what's gonna happen to the old ones? Will they be refurbished? Or are we just gonna keep two machines on the street and get rid of the others who weren't free or who are whatever we have? Are they also gonna be refurbished also? That will be my question. Uh, as far as the trail is concerned, I'm also happy to see, um, that we are going to be moving this together forward, and hopefully it comes to fruition, and we'll have a walking trail and part trail for the citizens of the city.
Thank you. Back to the director, please refer his concerns about the sweepers to the director of Public Works. Thank you. Councilman Jacobs, thank you very much, your comments. Other comments? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm also very happy to see that these street sweepers, we are hopefully they're going to offer all the contracts that we purchase, they are sold new and, uh, now we see from places that I've seen firsthand of the sweepers, we have not presently do, it's not that they don't have all the dark, but a lot of the dirt is gonna become, and it just throws it, instead of being close to the curb, throws it out for a foot or so within the street, so that after they come through, you see all that dirt just accumulate in the street, and it's like almost like it was not clean. So I'm really hoping that at least we see that we are, that purpose are gonna do a better job than what we have now. Uh, and also, also, a little bit of the trip, I think this has been a great thing, I've been actually waiting to see this come through, it's good to see that they're gonna finally have the first base, you know, getting started here, and I think it is also, with my colleagues, gonna be a great thing for the city of the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gonzalez. Other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Bestin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
Aye, President Bestin.
Authorizing property officials to renew the state residential payment and rental taxes agreement on the property located at Route twenty-five, R. Avenue, terminated for non-revenue due to loan modification problem with mortgage company and financial hardship. Authorizing property officials to execute all purported documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fund grant this full year two thousand eleven for local law enforcement effort responsible for safety barriers along West River, one in amount of exceed forty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars eighty-one cents. Authorizing property officials to execute third-party agreement with the G.A. Law and State Holdings LLC, Elizabeth, for rehabilitation of a two-unit building located at Route twenty-five, Fulton Street, as required under terms of the state neighborhood stabilization program in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars. Authorizing property officials to execute third-party agreement with New Jersey Community Development Movement LLC, Jersey City, New Jersey, for the acquisition and rehabilitation of a four-unit apartment located in that Ch. Fifteen, Luther Street, as required under terms of the state neighborhood stabilization program in the amount of two hundred sixty thousand dollars. Recent reservation adopted November twenty-four, two thousand nine, authorizing third-party agreement for neighborhood stabilization program funds to correct the painting for the J-17, J-19 project, specifically to redistribute the funds of this project to other projects benefiting the Elizabeth Port Neighborhood in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars.
Order number four, would you like it?
Move on to orders, president.
Movement second comments.
Mr. President. I support the, um, third-party agreement regarding grant again, and why didn't you like it, and that would be specifically for the Elizabeth Port Neighborhood? Did, I don't think I've got.
I'd like to hear a response back on that.
Didn't this just say?
Um, this is a two-step process. The, uh, the, uh, reciting a, the resolution would not anywhere detail where future funds are known, so one thing.
I, I can see it here, um, specifically to redistribute the funds for this project, and then the project. That's, that's my question, and I also, so can you make a friend, give my, to the
Councilman Long? We have word from, uh, Mrs. Barrett, I don't know why he didn't call it, uh, indicating that once funds have been designated for a district, that they need to be spent in that district.
But that's not my understanding, it was an N S P funds, because once designated to the city, it could be used anywhere, exactly, but we have some other N S P funds that were designated for a project, that would be redesignated to another project that wasn't in the same location. So I'm just, I want to remind you, making this restriction on this money.
Can I give a suggestion? Uh, we can amend the resolution to rescind the, uh, the agreement with, uh, Brandon Day without further stipulation, where it might develop, so that I achieve the, uh, goal of rescinding.
Yes, how is that okay? Well, I just sent a letter, and the letter isn't there, maybe it's with the word, it's...
It's missing?
I just pulled a letter, um, that's based off, and it doesn't say anything about it with the word neighborhood, so I can look into why...
I understand, but so you mean the movement that I think you, you're pressing, and...
You amend the resolution to rescind the agreement with, I mean, without commenting on where the, uh, release funds are going to be designated.
I mean, if the Councilman would like to make a friendly amendment, it's accepted, and that's...
Yeah, Councilman, I'll accept, I'll attend your, uh, your... So this is, uh, so, so you're reading, uh, the motion, uh, as regards to this resolution, that, uh, that we rescind the third-party agreement for neighborhood stabilization program funds, and they incorporate a period, without further discussion about where the, uh, release funds, uh, will be, uh, used, and, uh, Matt Farquhar, if you can check the, Mrs. Barrett, about that, is that, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, other comments, Councilman Nassan?
Then we watch just the cable, and then we have an answer, because, I mean, the Councilor should request information to have an answer, uh, and I don't think it will be appropriate to play around with the resolution tonight, or if we make a motion to pay, or if it's on the side, everybody's gonna make the answer.
I don't understand.
But I, I don't, I don't think it requires being capable, and I don't know what the time, timelines on us, but Councilman Nassan, I assure you, that, uh, that there are fact two things that have stayed here, one is rescinding the resolution, which we can do, and the other one is on discussion, I will come to go, which is a conversation account for a helpful later on, so I hear what you're saying, Councilman Nassan, I think that...
As long as we don't jeopardize somebody else's occupation, then, I don't have all the facts before we are, we're comfortable to vote it as something that, you know, even the, the whole department, I don't think it's clear on that.
Okay, roll call.
I think the whole department made it sound very clear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, maybe maybe fine.
I have to begin, it's twenty thousand, I don't think it was very clear to me, because...
Councilman Nassan, uh, if the, uh, if the resolution is amended, would, would we pleasure from...
I understand, I don't have all the facts before me, but I mean, the, so, so, City Council, Councilor requests information, we don't have the information, it's been unmasked, I can delete it completely, you made a motion to the table, and I think on one time she felt very upset, because she wasn't able to do that.
I don't understand.
I'll fight it, Councilman Nassan, this way, if, if, if... Councilman Nassan, if you wish to make a motion to take, you may use them.
I don't have all the facts before me.
Okay.
The, the same question she had, that would ask the question, and if I don't have an answer, I can reword something that we don't have an answer.
Well, okay, uh, other comments, other resolutions? Uh, the resolutions, you want to do that in separate?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's, let's leave this one, um, first, uh, this is a vote on, uh, Councilwoman Bishop, uh, resolutions to rescind the, uh, third-party agreement for neighborhood state residential urban funds from Brandon Day, with no discussion about where the release funds are to be designated for. Is there a second?
Second.
No, it's your answer, it's, 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 Councilman Gonzalez. Roll call.
Councilwoman Purvis Sebastian.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
I approve the resolution. Other persons?
Councilwoman Purvis Sebastian.
I don't call this, uh, more, yeah, we're, we're, uh, yeah, maybe, just for me, oh, motion to, yeah, move the resolution, move the, President, I thought we did, did? Yeah, you did, yeah. Okay, all right.
Okay, uh, second, other, other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
These are all the other resolutions, yeah, the other resolution, uh, I don't feel comfortable to vote on this resolution, because from lack of information, uh, the resolution was rescinded originally, that this funding will benefit municipal neighborhood only. We've read best of resolution, Councilman.
Right, uh, we're avoiding, uh, which resolution.
You're, you're, the balance of resolutions, the four resolutions prior to that.
Oh, one before, sorry.
No, other, other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Purvis Sebastian.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jackus.
Issues on, um, uh, the Jersey, we don't have a group? I agree with most.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Long.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nassan.
Aye.
President King.
I approve the resolution. And the, uh, as noted in the President's resolution, that's, uh, including those comments that were made also to the President, that's right. Thank you, very much, Councilman.
Authorize tax collector to cancel refund credit and overbilling of taxes on property located at three fifty-four, three fifty-six, Road St. Place, for tax year two thousand eleven, in the total amount of six thousand eight hundred three dollars forty-three cents. Authorize tax collector to cancel refund credit and overbilling of taxes on the property located at two eleven, for the tax year two thousand ten, in the total amount of six thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars forty-two cents. Authorize tax collector to cancel refund credit and overbilling of taxes on the property located at two twenty-five, South Fox Street, for tax year two thousand eleven, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars sixty-nine cents. Authorize tax collector to cancel refund credit and overbilling of taxes on the property located at Parsons, six fifty-three, six fifty-five, Carter Street, for tax year two thousand eleven, in the total amount of nine thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars twenty-one cents. Establishing the removal disposal of three young properties listed on Schedule A on file with the City Vote Office, in the total amount of ten thousand ninety-one dollars sixty-seven cents, paid to allocate those approved in the rental licenses.
Agreed, resolutions, your pleasure.
Move to all four quarters, President.
Move to second, comments? Councilwoman?
This one, is there a, is there a, is there a bar, is there a, is there a bar?
I think it's a, the, 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 the,[1799.12]